It's time to get started, so we have a roll call.
Councilmember Hahn.
Here.
Hoag.
Here.
Hopkins.
Here.
Blackwell.
Here.
Chipman.
Here.
Von Redworth.
Here.
Okay, and the invitation tonight is going to be given by Pastor Jody Good, and followed by the Pledge of Allegiance from former councilperson.
Gracious God and Father, we thank you for your presence here this evening. We pray that you will bless every heart here this evening and grant wisdom and compassion as they serve the people of Weezer. We are reminded, Father, that as we serve the people, we are also serving you, and we thank you for that honor. And I pray this now, in the name of the Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, are there any committee reports?
Mr. Mayor, I have a report from the library board. They are having their annual book sale during Fiddle Week, so June 14th through 21st, in the conference room. And they'll have lots of books to choose from and DVDs. So it should be very good shopping. During the last month, Timber had set a record, I mean, a goal, to have over 4,000 books checked out, and they surpassed that at 4,343 books to 4,035 patrons, so she's pretty excited. June 1st was her third anniversary, and she's done a wonderful job at the library, and we're so glad to have her. That's my report.
Okay, thank you. Are there any committee reports? Okay.
I was like, what, no?
No, we didn't meet, so I have nothing to say this month. I know, it's shocking. You're welcome. It's my gift to you.
Okay, let's go to your department reports then. Natasha always has something to say.
Wrong way. Sorry. Uh-oh.
No background, is it?
Maybe. Strongly what you do.
Nothing.
Larry messed it up.
Did you click again? Thank you.
Now you're gonna hear the panic in my voice. Mayor and City Council, this is your monthly reports for May of 2024. So there were 16 adult arrests, eight misdemeanor, eight felony. There was zero juvenile arrest. There was 37 citations, seven more misdemeanor, 30 infractions. Calls for service were 435, case reports were 61. Felonies were eight, misdemeanor eight, accident four, and incident 41. Okay. Okay. Okay, so there was 29 dog complaints, 10 were impounded, 11 were returned to owners, one was adopted, and two were transferred out. There were six cat complaints, five impounded. We did five of trap neuter and release this month, and there was one wildlife. The ordinance complaints this month were 34 weed, 13 abandoned vehicles, three parking, and they did one VIN inspection. The wastewater department's May flow for 2023 was 35 million, 20,000. The May flow for 2024 was 32 million, 200,000. The May average daily output was 1 million, 40. The wastewater treatment plant ran the belt press and hauled 106 tons of biosolids to Clay Peak. They took the contact chambers offline for cleaning. They installed new motor in wastewater plant recycle center. The water department, May of 2023, 23.39 million gallons. May of 2024, 26.55 million gallons. The water department finished Park Street project. They repaired a water service to the sewer main lift. They tested all city park backflow devices and flushed all 303 fire hydrants in the distribution system. The electric department's power consumption for April of 2023 was 30,997,339 kilowatts. April of 2024 was 3,939,279 kilowatts. They continued work at the new subdivisions. They wired CTs and tested voltage on a 1,500 kV transformer for Treasure Valley Farms and continued tree trimming. The street department did five loads of asphalt on patchback and potholes, planted a tree for Arbor Day, cleaned up some abatement lots, finished alley cleanup, set barricades out for the pool, and had a very successful pond cleanup. The recreation department's youth baseball and softball are underway. Youth golf has started today, actually. Pool is up and running. We have our new lifeguards trained and working with our returning guards. Still looking to hire a few more. We had another successful youth track program. The building department issued seven building permits this month for single-family dwellings, one commercial building, one residential garage, and one carport. Mayor and City Council, that concludes your department reports for May of 2024.
Well, had a chance to look at the minutes from the last meeting?
I'd just like to say I really enjoyed the new format. So, Mayor, I motion that we approve the minutes that submitted.
For a second. It's been moved in second and all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. And has the finance committee had a chance to look at the bills for the month?
Yes, we have. And we reviewed the bills and authorized those for the mayor to authorize the mayor to sign the vouchers.
So it's removed, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Hahn.
Yes.
Blackwell.
Yes.
Chipman.
Yes.
Von Redworth.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Hoag.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Motion passed. We have no unfinished business and new business. I would like to welcome the Blue Cross Foundation of Idaho. As you are aware, they have given us an $85,000 grant to help with our parks becoming more of a gathering place. And so I will let them introduce themselves. And would you say your name and address?
Yes, Courtney Frost, and my address is 4845 North Inker, Wizney, Idaho, 83703. Man, that's all of you looking, and I was like, what is my address? What is my address? I'm Tasha Box, 4625 North Diver Avenue, Emery, Idaho. Anyway.
And these ladies have been wonderful to work with.
Thank you. So my name is Courtney Frost. Again, I am a senior program officer at Blue Cross Idaho Foundation for Health. I have been in this role for nine years, and I wanted to give you all a kind of update on who we are, how we're going to work with your community, and what you can expect from myself and Tasha here in the next five months. I just want to make sure to answer any of your questions. This is a very, very unique grant opportunity. So thank you so much for coming along with us. So Blue Cross of Idaho Foundation for Health is a nonprofit entity. We are separate from the Blue Cross of Idaho. We're a 501(c)(3) with our own board and our own financing. We focus on the root causes that impact health of all of Idaho. I am very, very proud that our footprint is the entire state of Idaho, no matter where you are, who you are, or your population. And that's one of the things that I am most, most proud of. We focus on three different areas: community, healthcare, and education. I oversee community, and community means a lot of things to a lot of people, but in this role, it means working with municipalities. So I will give you some background on the community project. So several years ago, we noticed in our communities throughout the state that folks are divided. I don't think that that's anything new, again, pandemic and a lot of other things. And we're noticing also that civility was at a really critical point. When we talked to communities throughout the state and mayors throughout the state, we heard that out of the health issues that they're experiencing, civility and the sense of belonging was at a level that they wanted some help with. At the same time, we're seeing national and international data on the loneliness and isolation epidemic that we're seeing that everyone, whether your children or senior citizens, are experiencing, feeling loneliness, not connected to one another. And we thought, because we need our communities where they need us, we needed to try something to help communities see each other as community members, rowing the same direction, really bridging community pride in the sense of belonging, not only for physical health, but mental health as well. So that is where the community project came from. We really wanted to make sure that we met communities where they need and that we use this time to not only give an $85,000 grant for open space that physically brings people together, but also some technical assistance, which Tasha will talk about in the next section, about wanting to make sure that what we do with the communities who receive the community project really can last really generations, if you would like. So that's a little bit about the foundation and about this grant. I will tell you, the Community Project Grant is the largest RFP application that we have received. We have had this grant for three years, and over the last two years, we had over 90 cities in Idaho apply for this grant. And huge congratulations to Weezer because you were one of the few communities who were selected for this grant out of almost half of Idaho. So big, big kudos. One of the reasons why we thought that you all would be an incredible partner is the pride that comes from the application of how much your community, your mayor, really believes in this community of tying one another together to really view each other, again, as neighbors, not just the guy from down the street. So that very much stood out in your application. I just want to say big kudos to you all and your community, and we really look forward to working with you. So Tasha will give you some insights on what that actually looks like. So just how I'm involved, my name is Tasha, and I am part of Reynolds &amp; Myers, which is a strategic communications firm. And we've been working with Blue Cross of Idaho Foundation for Health for the duration of this, from the very beginning of the community project and then prior to that. But what was special about the community project and just any grant that comes from Blue Cross of Idaho Foundation for Health is that it is not a grant that is just given and then we walk away. We stick around for a while. So that's where my job comes in, from the technical assistance side. So the way this works is it works in two parts. So there's the built environment focus of the community project, and then there's the technical assistance side of it, and that's where the communications comes in. So the built environment is finding a physical place that can be built for people to gather, physically gather. But even more so is you can't just build something and then just walk away and be like, everybody's gonna gather there, we're done. It goes deeper than that, as we all know. So from a community standpoint, or from a communication standpoint, what we do is even today, just going through and understanding who lives in Weezer. What do people do? What are these teenagers who are standing on the corner? Where are they going? Where are they coming from? What do they want? What's missing? And not just coming in and telling you all what to do. It's we work together, and we are informed by the community of what to do because nobody knows Weezer like Weezer, right? So that part is where we, the sense of belonging is, there's a feeling when community members are just people in general. When you're asked a question and someone actually hears you, there's just this confidence and this trust that's built. And sadly, it doesn't happen a lot. That is our main area of focus, is asking a question, hearing what the answer is, and then implementing that answer. So from that side of things, we do it in a series of ways, which I'll explain in a little bit. And then from communications, from a city and municipality standpoint, is we develop plans that can be used for the community project. So whether it's, you know, how to speak to community members, developing a brand for the city, believe it or not, it's actually called a brand for the city. Because when you create a brand, you create a sense of identity, and this is also what's informed by the community, not by us. And that's how you find something to belong to. You can identify with that. And so together, when we're working to create that identity and that brand for the city, then we can say, oh, that's what I belong to. That's who I am. I am Weezer, I am this. And so we start along that road for the brand creation that we can all jump onto. We can all, again, rowing in the same direction here. And then furthermore, just working from a communication standpoint, is what toolkit, what tools can we use as far as how do we survey people within the community that's different than what we've done up to this point? How do we identify people who have not been spoken to yet, who we have not heard from, who have not had their input implemented? We need to find those people. And so we go through that process together and then also train on how to use this past the community project time. There's also, you know, even from social media and media releases and all of those things that are necessary, we create these toolkits and these tools that can be referenced whether you all are on the city council or other people after you come on. Everybody's doing the same thing, and we're consistent in what we're doing. But again, it's not built by us technically. It's informed by you and created by us for guidance for the future. So those are the two different parts, and it goes on and on. I mean, you're probably gonna be sick of hearing about our names, but we're really excited to be working with Weezer. And I just, from a personal standpoint, just with Mayor and Lena today, it's just the passion. And I'm seeing all your faces, and this is the first time you've seen me, but I actually know a little bit about each one of you who are sitting up here. And that's just by today, in meeting people and asking questions and going and talking about the rich history of Weezer, understanding who owns which businesses, who's banking, who's accounting, who has a cool, cool shop that we wanted to go to. But it's just really understanding and learning. So I mean, just the passion and love for this community is infectious, and we're really, really excited to get started through that. So that's kind of, that's my role here. Did I miss anything on the parts and pieces? I might have some little surprises here and there. It's not a fully baked idea, I will be clear about that. We don't do the same thing for each community that's selected. We do different things, and it's just based on the needs of the community. So I wouldn't be able to list exactly what it is that we'll be providing, but it would be everything that's needed and then nothing that isn't. We're not gonna do any of that wasteful stuff. And then, let's see, so far as expectations go, like why we're here? Yeah, yeah. So again, that's the community project. Just like Tasha said, we never, at the foundation, just write a check and walk away. We really look into being a partner. So that comes with either technical assistance in the form of survey or data gathering or anything like that. Imperson engagement. Imperson engagement. So that is where Tasha and her company come into play. So we'll be working side by side with you, really understanding. Again, yes, you are gonna be getting a park, but the park will be based from feedback that we will be going in the next five months from the community, and that will be led by Tasha. So it's gonna be really cool. The tools that you will get and receive will be used during this, but also it's gonna be something that you can use forever, whether you use it or not, that's up to you. But at least you'll get the tools, templates, trainings to get informed community decisions. And then expectations. Just to let you know, we'll be working with you all until around September, September, October. We will be as transparent as you would like. We can come every meeting if you'd like. We already meet with Mayor and Lena, and they are doing an incredible job of being so thoughtful about this grant. But again, it is based off of the community feedback. I think that's a big part of this, is building trust within communities, communities feeling like they own something, that they really got their ideas implemented, and we kind of peel back that onion. So I think that's a big part that I would hope that you, as city council members, agree, is when we come back in September and say, hey, we did A, B, C, D, E, F, G, and this is where your community is going, to really trust us that we did a thorough job. And again, then after September, just as the treasurer, that's when your check will be cut, and you will have that. So just to let you know. And anything else, we're here, we're really wanting to make sure that this is tailored to your unique community. So like Tasha said, we will be here however you need us. And with that, any questions, comments, concerns?
We're excited, thank you.
So are we. Yeah, we really are. We are honored to work with you all. And just so excited for the next five months. Okay?
Welcome to Weezer.
Thank you.
I've had opportunity to know Courtney for a while, and wonderful people to work with.
Yes, yes. Mayor was a part of the community, was actually a part and was chosen to be a part of our Community Health Academy last year. And so he chose to be a part of a five-month learning collaborative with other mayors throughout the state. So it's really, he's really shown up in a big way of community health, and it's really unique and fun. So thank you so much.
Great, thank you, thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, next is to assign resolution.
No, introduce the new mayor.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, looking at the old. We'll introduce Reese Rizik, who is our new city attorney. And I'll let him say something.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I don't know if you need this, as loud as my voice is, but.
And would you give your name and address?
Sure, Reese Rizik, 224 Southwest 3rd Street, Fruitland, Idaho. I hope you don't hold it against me that I'm a Fruitland grizzly.
We have others.
They're not allowed to.
No, that's true. But I grew up in Fruitland and came back 12 years ago and started my law practice in Fruitland, and I'm excited. Have always really enjoyed Weezer and thought highly of Weezer, so I'm excited to work with you all and look forward to it. Happy to answer any questions that you may have about me.
Tell a little bit about your community involvement.
Oh, sure, certainly. So I served four years on the Fruitland City Council, and then I served five years as a Pay County Commissioner. So a lot of experience, sitting in your shoes, and so understanding both sides of that when it comes to legal matters. And I've also served at, before I was county commissioner, I served as a contractor for Pay County to do civil work for them as well, for some of the different county departments. And just love being involved. I'm a big community supporter, so I'm involved with Rotary and the Elks and many, many organizations that I could probably go on for way too long explaining, so.
Yeah, and that was one of the reasons why I liked choosing Weezer is simply because of the amount of community involvement that he had, plus having sat in our shoes as county commissioner. You know, he knows both sides, and so I think he'll be very valuable. So appreciate you accepting this.
Thank you. I appreciate all of you bringing me on board, so happy to be a part of this team.
Mr. Mayor, I just have a question. I was wondering, as the representative on the library, or to the library board, I was wondering if there's a collaboration around the state of city attorneys working on how to incorporate the new library law?
And? I've reached out to a couple. I just got back in town a few days ago for my trip, so. But I'm waiting at your back, so. But I'm certain there is.
Sure, I know it's certainly something that's new to the whole state, and I think everybody is scrambling to get on top of it, so.
Definitely.
I hope you'll have some help there.
We have a short turnaround, July 1st, and so I have been reviewing the policies.
Okay, super.
We'll be happy to make some recommendations.
Okay, good.
Please welcome aboard. Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you very much.
Okay, now.
I'm gonna mute your mic.
The next item on the agenda is to assign resolution number 690 to surplus vehicles, motion with additional vehicles. Last month, we surplus vehicles, but we did not assign a resolution number to it. But we also have a few more items to add to the list, so you have that new.
So the additions were the 1996 Parks F-250, the 2010 Impala Police Cruiser, and the 1998 Fire Expedition. So we did make a motion to surplus these items. We just need to, like the mayor said, assign a resolution and then with the motion to include the new items.
So I'd like to make a motion that we pass resolution number 690, which includes the three additional vehicles.
I'll second.
It's been moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. Okay, and then the next item is the Historic Board's Preservation Committee rezon request. And would you like to talk about that?
I wasn't at the last meeting, but from my understanding, it's to rezone the area around the post office from commercial to residential. And I believe you'll see in your packets that everybody who was in that area, I believe, turned in a letter that you could all read. I am not sure what the P&amp;Z motion was to move forward.
I can clarify something just from the design review committee.
Okay.
So the idea has been presented so that for us to have a more solid historic preservation section, it will help clarify, because our zoning is not the cleanest in the world. And that particular district currently is zoned as C, not C1, 2, or 3, but really it's some of the most historic houses that we have in the city. And so the motion was to push it back to residential so that we can preserve the purpose of it being historic residential. And then that also allows some of those historic buildings to have access to grants and other such things like that because it will be zoned correctly. And I think that's the idea behind it. It also starts to solidify for us a number of different things as far as our layover zones that we're trying to do for the design review, Main Streets program, and having clear lines of what's commercial versus what's residential. It's like a step one in trying to clean up some of our patchwork of zonings.
And I might just add, my recollection of the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting was that they did have approval or have acknowledgement and support from all the property owners. And in fact, although it's zoned commercial, I think every one of those parcels is being used as residential.
Right.
So it doesn't present a problem as far as the actual use of the properties at the present time. And probably the use of those properties is, what, almost forever? It does, you know, it does set back the limit by a block of our commercial zone. But I mean, I can't imagine that we're gonna tear down all those old homes and put a settlement lot in there.
Yeah. Great example.
This committee has done a great job, I mean, very thorough. They went to every resident in the area. They dug into the history of why it was zoned the way it is in the first place. And I just take a look at the work they did and presenting this, they did a great job. A lot of work put into it.
I agree, and I think it's simply correcting mistakes that was made in the past.
Mr. Mayor, I noticed in the notice of public hearing, it requests the zoning change from C commercial to A, low-density residential. But in the previous document I looked at that we got, it talks about B to B residential. So what is it that we're actually being, I should have brought that up earlier so you could figure it out, but. you could figure it out, but, okay, so the notice of public hearing says A, and it was.
Minutes are where it states B. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, right. So, which is, which are we being asked to change it to?
I believe it's.
It's A.
All right, just so.
And so, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended B, is that?
The, in the minutes from the planning and zoning meeting, it shows that someone stated B.
We had technical error.
Could be that they just missaid something, but that's the only place where it mentions B. I think everything else is referring to A. And if you look at our actual planning and zoning codes, A is what would match the other homes in that area.
Right, and I think that was what they asked all the neighbors about and the residents too, is A. So, that was just a, I just want to make sure that we have our.
The actual application also shows C to A. That's the actual proposed application.
The actual application is probably the thing.
And what was the recommendation by the P&amp;Z?
That we changed to.
To change to what, Ted?
To A.
Okay, because I'm just looking at their. Dennis Lance, 548, introducing himself and speaking on behalf of the Weassey Historical Preservation Committee. He said they're requesting the zone be changed from C commercial to B1 residential.
Yeah, that's the agenda for the planning and zoning.
And it's their draft minutes, so it's not official documentation, because it hasn't been approved.
And where does it say A?
On the actual zoning packet.
In the packet.
Which is the.
Okay, we don't have, we don't have record of the resolution that was actually passed by P&amp;Z?
In the packet.
They can't change it to B. There's.
All they do is make a recommendation. They don't pass it by a resolution or anything like that. They simply make a recommendation.
What was their recommendation?
I believe to, I'm literally exactly in a minute.
I'm looking at the documentation. It says, proposed C to A is what it talks about. That's what it's showing in our packet. And the proposal down at the bottom, Historic Preservation Committee's priority was to educate affected property owners to get their support for rezoning the property back to A residential.
And no matter what.
There it is.
If I understand correctly, no matter what their recommendation is.
We decide.
We decide.
There's just a recommendation.
Would that not be correct, Council?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, I motion that we approve the rezon to A.
I'll second.
But may I adjourn?
Yes.
So, was there a comprehensive plan change?
It actually matches, it moves to match our comprehensive plan. That's why we think it's a corrective step. It's to fix a mistake that happened some point for some reason that no one knows, it's not written down.
Rezones are supposed to be in public, you're supposed to have a public hearing to take testimony.
We did.
Hey, it was council, perfect. Okay. Sorry, I didn't.
No, you're fine.
I didn't have that background to know, so.
No problem. Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to change the zoning from C to A. Could we have a roll call, please?
Mayor, just a point of clarification. We're changing it from C commercial to residential A, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Are we ready?
Can we have a roll call?
That's the motion. Councilmember Von Brederich?
Yes.
Chipman?
Yes.
Hahn?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passed. Next item on the agenda?
I motion adjourn.
Second?
I motion adjourn.
Okay, it's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?